Welcome to the March 7, 2018 zoning board of appeals public hearings. We have four cases on the agenda tonight, so we will get right into them. Our first case tonight is an application from Michael Hansen, case 1-18 with respect to the Parfum Eleven Boulder Trail, Walpole, Mass, zoning district R. It's an application for a special permit under section 5B 3N of the zoning bylaws to allow the garaging or maintaining of four automobiles in a detached one-family residential dwelling. Welcome.
Welcome, Pat Strachey for Michael Hansen. I'm just requesting for a four-car garage in North Walpole. Reasons for it is the answer is a lot family. Everybody drives a car in today's world, so they're all looking at garage, each one of them. The garage itself, the four-car garage, is consistent with the neighborhood. Just for an example, number 12 Boulder Trail has a four-car garage across the street from them. Number 24 Crosswood also has a four-car garage. So it's consistent with the neighborhood. I'm unaware of any objections. The only question that was raised was from Margaret Walker, the engineer department. She looked for some comments about the impervious services.
Drainage. She's the queen of day drainage. She's our girl.
She is a guest.
Yes.
So I said everybody has a copy of the engineer's comments about it's less than 50%. So we're just hoping that this board would approve that application for the special permit for the four-car garage.
Mr. Chairman, if I might. I went down there to look at it, and the houses are huge, and they do have four cars. But you know, I got to the end, had a heck of a time trying to find Eleven Boulder. I went around and around, and all I could see was this big mound. Is there a house behind that? I could see a foundation.
What's under construction right now?
Oh, the garage is under construction.
Well, they'll tie your houses.
Oh, because I couldn't figure out if, oh, here, where is this? And you know, my GPS said, okay, now get out and walk. I said, I don't think so.
So there's a foundation.
Yes, there is.
Right now, as it's presently planned, presently planned, it has a, the garage itself, you'd see is a storage facility. That would be considered converted over to the fourth garage.
So the house isn't even there yet. Well, that's good then. Because I thought I must be losing my mind. I see no house.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think you, well, as you referenced it, we have a letter from the town engineer from February 6, 2018. Her only comment was, as the city is within area number four of the water resource protection district, the law is subject to provisions of section 12 of the zoning bylaw regarding impervious cover and recharge requirements. The applicant and the engineer should be required to provide data that addresses these requirements. Well, just going through them real quick. Planning board had no comment at the time. Conservation had no comments. Order Health had no negative comments. Walpole Police Department did not have any public safety concerns. And the fire department reviewed the applications and plans. The construction plans had been previously submitted for review by its department, and inspection will keep them back to the file. So I'm just trying to look at Sec Area 4 of the Water Resource Protection District. So it's the 15%. So imagine, so you'll have that put on the plan?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Make that as a condition.
I mean, you wouldn't mind if it, as obviously it's a condition that it complies with that.
Okay.
Since we don't have it in front of us, and I don't think there's a point to having to come back just to show us that.
We'll modify the plan.
That's what they're, yeah, their sections. So Area 3 and 4 is all use is allowed in zone 1, Area 1 and Area 2. And there's a residential development on sites of 80,000 square feet. Whether even need, if you even need that, that's, that commercial industrial 40,000 and 15% is for commercial and industrial. Such residential developments to be designed so that the greater 15% or 2,500 square feet of buildings shall not be rendered impervious. So they're saying they comply with that.
What's the square footage on this house?
Okay. Well, but their, in your application, isn't for any relief from the law.
It's the greater of, so they're taking 15% of whatever the lot size is, and that's a pretty big number, even though this is a pretty big house.
What's the square footage on this, on the impervious, on this house?
So is that, so what's, I mean.
No calc's on there now, right?
Yeah.
What's the square footage of the house now? And the garage?
Footprint, right?
Footprint, right?
The footprint's 56 on the square feet.
Including the garages.
Including the garage, yes.
Yeah, okay.
So this won't make any change to the, it won't change the square footage?
Yeah. So what is it, it's now attached by a, you drive underneath type of thing?
Yes.
It's nice.
Jeez. This is Walpole. This is only Walpole.
Walpole deserves this.
There's a requirement for roof runoff being recharged in groundwater. Is that, that's planned as well?
I was gonna ask Dave for his comments. We have our building commissioner, and first, I do apologize too. I forgot to introduce our new associate member, Mr. John Lee, so welcome aboard. I apologize for not introducing you before we started. Dave, do you have any comment on this?
Yeah, just very quickly, the percentage, I actually talked to the engineer about that. They were gonna put it on their RAS vote when they came up with it, but it all seemed to work when I talked to him. So, but it would see it as put in condition would be a little bit easier.
And the recharge that.
Right.
That Bob talked about.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. I mean, I imagine there's a whole, you know, I mean, I don't know where they are in the process.
Yeah, they only get the foundation of the ground right now, so.
But they have a building permit.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, because if they don't have it as a garage, they gotta use it as a different type of storage, but.
You're right, you're right. You can have that space that's not as a garage.
Right.
Living space.
It's still living space of some sort.
They have it as a, more than three cars, they need the special permit.
Correct, correct.
How come we didn't see the other houses up there? That have four.
Excuse me? The other ones that are up there now?
That have four-car garages.
I don't know why they were there before I got here. So, I mean, I can look into that if you want to.
No, it's okay. Just asking.
Okay.
Thanks. Any other comments? I mean, seems pretty straightforward in this, you know, obviously special permit conditions and compatible with the neighborhood and not detrimental to the neighborhood. It seems like it's a neighborhood where four cars is common, whether they've were, however they were approved there, they've been there. So I know, I know I went by the site too, so I don't think it's out of, out of place where four cars are there. We actually do have a, we have a draft on this one too. So is there any members of the public here tonight to speak on this one way or another? Nobody here on this case? All right. I don't think I have any more questions. John?
No, it sounds like it's about a 7% impervious coverage.
Right.
As long as that's noted on the plan.
Yeah. Well, no, I mean, I think we condition that it has to be.
Yeah.
Like, you know, sooner than later, if they could put that on, I don't know what, when you would need that, Dave, but I'd prefer not to wait till the very end.
I actually refer to that as part of the foundation as well.
Okay, that, okay. So when you get, all right, the foundation has.
There's an issue there, I'll bring it up.
So foundation's in, and they should be able to put that on that I build plan. And along with the drainage that's capable of recharging at least one inch of runoff, can we have that on there too, Dave? Is that, okay.
So is the condition simply that those information?
Have to be combined with.
Well, it's, they have to be.
And shown on plan.
And shown on plan, right.
Yeah, right.
Also, I'd like to add, as far as no other relief granted.
Yeah.
Because we're, we're really only have an application under five, not under 12, even though we're conditioning some elements from 12. So I just want to be clear, we're not granting anything else.
Good point.
If it goes over, they have to come back. That was, that was the one I thought.
Yeah, I think the comment from Maggie is right, was their question if they needed it, and they're saying they don't, and I just, we're just saying, yeah, might as well.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, right, no, I, right, we're not making any relief on section 12 or any of that stuff.
Right, since we're conditioning some elements of section 12, I just wanted to be clear, we're not granting anything else.
I know we do have some drafts after when we close the hearing, so. All good?
I'm good.
Okay. Bob, any questions, comments?
Nope, I'm good.
All right, then I'll make a motion to close case number 1-18.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, let's, we have some draft decisions here. We might as well pass them out.
Oh, these are all the same?
If that's okay with everybody?
Yes.
Yep.
Is that the, is that a 1?
Yeah.
118.
All right, let's just walk through it before we make a motion. Yeah, well, we gotta, we wanna, okay. Do we wanna add some of it, and then we could make a motion as? Yeah. I think we're just talking about 5B 3N, so I think it's, you know, I would say.
With respect to A, there is no, nothing.
Right, so, yeah, there's nothing. B, the vehicular and pedestrian traffic is similar to other houses in the neighborhood, and it's a residential, using a residential.
E through T doesn't even.
It's a single-family home, and, you know, it's large single-family home, similar to all the other homes in the neighborhood, or C.
I think the number of vehicles is commensurate with the size of the home.
Right.
I think is what you said.
Yeah, and corresponds to some other homes in the neighborhood.
In the neighborhood, right.
Compies with all the dimensional.
Yeah.
Requirements. And our standard language for E is an F.
Standard language is because it's residential use, that it doesn't impose risk to fire explosion.
Same for the second one.
Yeah.
Right.
Character of the neighborhood is residential, with other houses similar with four-car garages, so it's compatible.
Yeah, and I think we may also say that the size of the lot is one that permits for the additional garage.
Garage.
Right. If we were in this neighborhood on a smaller lot, and we were trying to squeeze in a fourth garage, I think that could be a different story.
Where does she have? Where does she have, condition in there?
And it doesn't look like she has.
No.
No, because they usually come before.
All right, before this part.
The findings.
Right.
Yeah, so here's condition, page, on page one.
Yeah, I'll just blank up here, I thought there it is.
Yeah.
So we got the conditions.
Right, so.
Additional relief granted, and that the.
Well, the work will be constructed according to plan presented at public hearing. The plans will be amended, or.
Well, yeah, will comply with, would comply with the impervious coverage found in, you know, found in, what is it, section 12.
Yep.
As stated, and should be found on a, on the site plan certified by an engineer.
Mm-hmm.
And the last one would be the same thing, would be the same to comply with the recharge found in section 12.
Yep.
All right, you got that?
Do we have to refer Maggie's letter at all?
I think we, we, I think we covered those in those two.
I agree.
Comments?
No, it's all fine with me.
Matt, do you want to add the date of the plan?
Yeah, let's make sure, yeah, make sure.
We do, yeah. That's typically, row 117.
Yeah, for the point that it's to be built according to, yeah.
As modified though by the, or do you?
That's just for the built, right, and constructed in accordance with that plan, yeah, but, and however we want the phrase, to be modified, yeah, it's gotta be updated to reflect compliance with section 12. They'd have to do it anyways, is what Dave's saying, if they showed a plan that where they were higher than that, they'd be back before us, so.
Right.
It's kind of stating the obvious, but we'll make sure it's on there so Dave doesn't have any, any question about it. He didn't hear it here.
Pretending to hear.
All right. This is his train work from now on, so.
Good sign up for this part of the job.
I'll make a motion on behalf of the applicant to grant special permit under section I'll make a motion on behalf of the applicant to grant special permit under section five B three N of the zoning bylaw to allow the garaging or maintaining of four automobiles in a detached one-family residential dwelling.
With the, right, with the conditions that, with the-
The conditions imposed.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Have a great night.
All right. And we know where we could go, keep a car if we need to store a car. All right, moving on. Our next case is, uh, application from Paul Sisternelli, case number two dash eighteen. Respect to the property located, lot one, Renmar Ave, Walpole, Mass, zoning district LM, water resource protection district three. It's an application for three variances under HC of the zoning bylaws, one, to allow a variance under section six B one and section twelve three A three B to allow a proposed commercial building to be constructed on an existing lot containing thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-five square feet, where forty thousand square feet is required. Two, a variance under section six B one to allow a proposed building to be constructed with a setback of twenty-five feet, where fifty feet is required. And three, a variance under section six B one note nine to allow outside storage area for equipment to be located with a setback of ten feet, where fifty feet is required. And it's an application for two special permits under section twelve four of the zoning bylaws. One, a special permit under section twelve three B to allow the storage and handling of toxic or hazardous materials on premises in quantities greater than those associated with the normal household use. And two, a special permit under section twelve three A three B and C for non-residential use to allow forty-four percent of the lot area to be rendered impervious, where fifteen percent is allowed. Are you here?
No, not here for the application, just quick clarification.
I, I know, yes, I know.
One, obviously, it's not HC, it's six B, even though you mentioned all-
Yes.
The right sections.
I, I, yes, yeah.
Same thing with twelve four, is actually twelve three, and again, you mentioned each one of the sections. Just very quickly, they have a, the previous application they had back in two thousand eight was approved by this board. Um, obviously, for all the exact same condition, just wanna clarify that even though the sections of the bylaw have changed, the actual requirements have not. So you're basically hearing the same thing, but the section numbers are different.
Same language is what you're saying, yeah.
Exactly.
Was it, uh, the other one I had a question on is the variance under section six B one note nine? Is that note eight? I, I couldn't figure- I just want, I, just while we're talking clarifications.
Well, yeah, the most is to have the double three, then would be-
I, I couldn't figure out what your, what they were asking for. It seemed to me it was just the, the use of what you were doing in the front, but maybe, uh-
Everybody loves this section, hopefully it'll be corrected. Nine is actually eight.
Right?
Yes. About the front setback is used for no other purposes, walks, drives, et cetera.
Yep, all right, just making sure before we get into it.
Walk correct.
We have to remember all those amendments.
Yeah, well, it's, uh, the, the, for the variance is under section six B.
Six B.
Right. And the application for the special permits are under twelve three.
Three.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And note eight.
Yeah.
And those are the only three things?
Yes. All right, well, with that said, we'll, we'll get going. Welcome. Uh, wherever, uh-
Yeah.
And wherever we could get, wherever we could get on camera, too.
Yeah, on the right side of the podium.
Yeah, I nearly, I need to put this in order. It's like C to one to nine.
My name is Paul D. Simone, Colonial Engineering.
Yep.
Sorry.
My name is Paul D. Simone, Colonial Engineering. The, the plan was prepared by, uh, John Anderson and Rick Merrickin, uh, back in two thousand and eight. John's retired, I know you guys all know John, and, uh, Rick is retired. I've worked with both of them since nineteen seventy-nine, so we had no problem putting a stamp on this, on these plans. The variances or special permits that were requested, you already know them, obviously, were granted prior. I do have a copy of the, uh, building permit that was submitted and signed off by everybody left the building department, uh, in two thousand seventeen, which you can have a copy of it. Maggie signed it, uh, everybody's on there but the building department. Maggie had a couple of questions, I talked to her today, and, um, one of the things she really cared about was the, uh, the lot coverage, forty-four percent versus the fifteen. But after I talked to her and explained that, 'cause she didn't have the file, so going over the, changing the role of the phone, the roof and impervious areas do go into a filtration system, which she, she forgot about, so I think she's gonna be kind of recanting that question on the impervious area, so. Again, all the stuff that was previously approved by this board, and of course, the planning board, uh, hasn't changed, we haven't changed the plans at all, all we did is change the sections on the corner that apply to these, uh, variants and special permits now, and put our seal on it, and, uh, new date.
I'm sorry, I just wanna make sure I understand, so the, you previously obtained relief for what you're showing on the plan, but the, you're reapplying because of the change in the section numbers in the zoning by-
Well, they've also run out.
They run out, they didn't-
Oh, they were time moving?
Yeah.
Two thousand and eight.
It was two thousand and eight, probably had some permit extension, if they had come and tried to keep it, that's a while-
Oh, gotcha, okay. So they haven't actually done-
The only reason why he didn't go forth with the price at the time is 'cause, uh, I don't know if you've actually looked at the plans, but I, I, when I saw them, I couldn't believe the retaining walls are gonna be quite costly, so I don't know how he's gonna build those.
Because it's, you know, obviously, it's a new case, can you, and, um, can you just walk us through? Well, can you guys walk us through what they're trying to, okay, can you walk us through what you're doing?
First of all, the, uh, the lot area, lots were created in the early seventies, it's pre-existing non-conforming, it's supposed to be forty thousand, it's, uh, underneath, it's thirty-eight thousand, whatever, on your sheets. So the area is thirty-eight thousand, sixty-three, thirty-five, or forty thousand, it's quiet. That's the first, and the second one would be, we brought that to the street with twenty-five feet instead of fifty, that was pretty self-explanatory. The third one would be, uh, storage containers over here, those have to be fifty feet from the street also, he's got a fence shown here, ten feet off the property, off the street line, so if he puts storage facilities in there, those, uh, containers, those metal containers, those tools, they would be within that front setback of fifty feet. The fourth one is the hazardous waste, which you've already granted, you only can tell exactly what kinda hazardous waste he's just talking about. And the last one is the, uh, the lot coverage, which is dealt with in the drainage calculations. So if you have a question on the toxic stuff, you can- Be more clear on that.
Yeah, well, I, and then, while you're up there, so-
Go ahead.
The, the, the building proposed is his, is a contractor, his office, an office and storage facility, right?
Come on in.
Yep.
Hi, I'm Paul Sisternelli, um, the, that's just for, just my garage equipment only, my office is not in there, it's, it's in the center of town.
All right, yep.
And as far as the toxic stuff, um, I have all my equipment, goes out to a fleet place to have like the service done and everything, so there's no oil changing at the garage. We might, in that storage container, we might keep like a quart of, you know, motor oil, can of ether, um, two gallons of gasoline for like the small power tools, and just stuff like that.
So all the work is, uh, all the, um-
All the-
Any mechanical work, mo, the, the big stuff will be done offsite, is what you're saying?
Correct, yeah, yeah, that's, that's why I just wanted to make clear that we send it out to a fellow that does all the big stuff. And it's just basically for myself, for my own garage, for the equipment to be inside as much as we can fit in.
And so you have these big retaining walls, is that what you're saying, going around?
Yeah, that re, that retaining wall is very costly, it's, it's like, uh, that's my retaining wall to the banking and to the back.
Top of a wall, so it's four feet and goes up to-
It's like fifteen five.
Fifteen feet in the back.
Yeah, with, with a lot of rebar in it, that's why I, I couldn't do it back in the time, it was very costly. That's, that's the whole reason.
Yeah, I, I don't have a copy of the, not, I'm just curious what the arguments were.
Do you have a copy of the old decision?
Um, I do, it's not, it's not, it's not on me.
Just a, what's on here, yeah, but it's a new case, so what's the-
She didn't, she didn't, you know, put it in the folder?
Yeah. Uh, maybe I'm miss, maybe I'm, maybe I'm missing it. Please. I still only kind of missed it, but, so I see it. Yeah, and I, we do have two members that were here then, so, you know, I'm sure-
Yeah.
There was a, a, uh, argument on the variance, as, as you know, it's a high threshold to get a variance, um, you know, block shape, size, topography, clearly, there's some topography issues here, um, so, I'm, you know, I, I just was curious what the rationale was behind that decision.
Well, definitely, I just said, the bar being done with the shape, uh, during now, why?
Yeah.
Yeah, the shape of the lot, we do.
That's why we do the second.
Yeah, so, yeah, the shape, what I would think apply, yeah, more to the setbacks, um.
I don't, I don't recall the hazardous material when we heard it before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I remember, I remember the setbacks, and I remember-
I mean, I, I think he's, the hazardous material is just the standard stuff he would be-
Yeah, it's just like a household.
Yeah, I think that's, it's more than you would have in your house, 'cause it's in the machine, but it's, uh-
Right.
It's nothing out of the-
Out of the book.
Um, of the ordinary for a business, especially, well, and it's not the level of you would, if they were fixing machines here, they, you know, they'd have a lot more of that type of stuff, but.
As I recall, in terms of the prior application, yes, it was the law, the very narrow, long rectangular lot.
Yeah.
It was the proximity of this intersection was, which was fairly heavily trafficked, it, um, the impervious surface was allowing for there to be a paving area so that vehicles could safely move onto the property-
In exit.
In the close proximity of this intersection.
Yep.
And the, uh, impervious surface was addressed through some of the recharging.
And the roof also.
Yeah.
If you, if you have a plan in front of you, you can see the galleys along the street, they, they have catch basin, and they take the runoff down from the dislocated area.
'Cause we, we spent a fair amount of time, if I recall, on all of that recharging, um, it, and that was probably what we spent the most time, because it's, um, relatively close proximity to lower area, right? I mean, so the recharge of the water, remember, was very important.
And they addressed that previously, they have addressed all that.
I think we had the comments.
Maggie didn't, couldn't remember that, but I'm showing what she finds in her files.
Um, we, I'll read her comments in one second, but, uh, that, that, that was helpful, but what was the, on the lot size, shape variance? Do you remember what that-
I don't remember that either.
That's the first question I have, and maybe the applicant can answer, why, this is short by a couple thousand feet, it's at the end of the road, why, why is it-
Fifteen hundred.
Why is it, uh, a short lot?
I don't know what the zoning was at the time these lots were created, in the early seventies, they may have been thirty thousand, I don't know. I don't even think this was limited manufacturing at that time, so, so have changed.
We saw this, that was, did you give me this in the file? It's not, I mean, I'm, it's, this, this must have been the application, we have the application from-
Yeah.
Before, and it was, uh, the lot requirement was, these were, it's the same, exact-
Same thing, yeah.
Five requests, as it was before, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Same language and everything, just different, uh, different reference.
I thought it all was the shape.
Uh, yeah, I mean, you know.
Do you have a copy of the decision?
No, that's why I was asking, we don't.
Uh, it's somehow it's just not in the folder. Um, it, it, well, it's relevant, it's also not relevant in, in other regards, 'cause it's a, a new case, but, you know, so it's, I think we could s, uh, more for reference on terms of, you know, what was presented and decided at the last, you know, hearing, so it would help us, um, but I think we'd come to those on-
Yes, I think you have to actually vote individually again because of, uh-
It's a new case, so I mean, like I said, it's, it's, it's relevant just for background information, but it's irrelevant in today's case.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So the question about the outdoor storage area that's within the setback, is, did you consider placing it in a compliant location, like swapping it with the parking that's in the back there, or is there, is there a reason why?
I think it's all be, I think, no matter, this lot is not very deep, right, it's only-
That's what I'm saying, there's not a lot of room to really switch anything around yet.
The lot's probably only a hundred.
Fifty feet cuts right to the middle of the lot.
Yeah.
Setback of fifty feet is quite substantial.
I drove up there, and I, I also drove up, is it Forest Street?
Yes.
Is that the name of the street? You, you have a large lot there as well, is that about this?
That's my landlord, my landlord owns that, I rent that, and his land comes around, and that's my lot that I bought.
Okay. So that wouldn't be your lot, uh, no?
No.
You rent that now to store stuff, right?
What's that?
You rent that land now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Jim Bristol is my landlord, it's all limited manufacturing, they're gonna put the over, over, uh, fifty-five up there, so originally, we were gonna sw, he was gonna take my lot for his industrial road down there, and he was gonna swap me out that piece, but it just didn't work into play for him for the condo, for the units, that's all.
All right, well, while we're, we do have some comments on public boards. The police department did not have any public safety concerns in relation to traffic, planning didn't have any comment at the time, the conservation said this property may require any filing with the conservation commission, that, something that, um-
Well, the only thing that I had, I just gave you a copy of the building permit that was signed off by conservation.
I passed it down, yeah.
Um, I don't believe he's within a hundred feet of any wetlands.
Yeah.
I believe the conservation issue was they put silk sacks in the catch basins, you know, for, uh, they just burn off, so that was their comment on that application I gave.
Okay, all right. Um, it's just, yeah, no, so.
Keep that piece of paper up there.
Board of Health voted, they have no specific issues with the special permit variance request, other than to require that all toxic hazardous materials stored on site, amounting in quantities greater than fifty gallons liquid volume and or twenty-five pounds dry weight are reported to the Board of Health annually. Anyone hear that one, is that, excuse me, fifty gallons liquid volume and or twenty-five pounds dry weight, are you, are you more than that?
Yeah.
Didn't think so, but. Uh, but, uh, water and sewer and water commissioners, um, reviewed the correspondence related to the above subject and concurs with the comments provided by the town engineer, that we'll get to in a second. Given that the proposed structure and associate operations are located within the water resource protection district, special emphasis should be placed upon the storage of toxins and or hazardous materials, with all protective measures being required as a condition of approval. Which gets us to the town engineer's comments, she had, uh, two letters, one was, just seeing if there's any change, um, one was February sixth, and one was March fifth. Uh, March fifth, um, uh, reference made to a plan by John Anderson dated two thousand and eight, an application from which the following comments are made with an additional copy of the noted plan now stamped by Paul D. Simone on March fifth. The following comments, please note that the backup information, calculations, or project description was submitted with this application, if any such materials are submitted, they may be additional comments forthcoming. I don't know what she's saying, wasn't submitted with this application?
But no backup.
Yes, yeah, I think she meant wasn't, but, um, it is anticipated that site plan approval for the site will be required, especially if any previously granted such site plan approval has lapsed. At the time of submission of such an application, there may be additional comments forthcoming on this plan. Regarding special permit variance request number four is noted on the plan, no backup documentation has been submitted. Request regarding storage of toxis, toxic or hazardous substances on site, so no review or recommendation can be made at the time. Regarding special permit variance request number five is noted on the plan, no drainage calculations or other materials addressing recharge and impervious coverage has submitted, been submitted, so no review regarding the second special permit request under section twelve three A three B C has been made.
And that's what I talked to her about today, was, uh, you were four on the-
Yeah, and that was, um, that was the same as her other, that was just an update from her other letter, it was not same, same language, so. So what's the, so, um, obviously, a plan like this has all the backup calculations and drainage information and, um-
And that, she has that, it's just she couldn't find it by the car door.
Okay.
When I told her that the, um, roof runoff and the impervious areas were, were calculated to be- When I told her that the, um, roof runoff and the impervious areas were, were calculated to be, uh, taken into consideration, then she started to remember, but she just didn't have the file, so.
Right, but those were, don't you need to update those calculations?
They shouldn't, we haven't changed anything on the site, no, I don't think so, everything shouldn't be there.
Wasn't she looking for hazardous waste?
She, she, so, um, there's no documentation had been submitted regarding storage of toxic or hazardous substances on site.
That has to be submitted.
We don't know what you would require, uh.
You have to have a list.
Um.
Oh, what's gonna be stored in?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if you go to.
That, that could be, we need to ask Dave, didn't the list of hazardous waste, didn't that change? Don't you have to update like every year now and send that in or something like that?
Well, if it's over then cer- certain size, right?
You have to send it into state. Yeah, you do have to send it into the state, and it is certain size, one, one of the things with a building like this, it's not only counting what you have on hand, it's also what's in each vehicle and in each, whether it's, whatever it is you're using, it's, that's the total. So.
That's the kind of thing you're gonna have to come up with, that's what she means.
Right, is that cap, that full calculation?
Sure.
No, also, just, just a description of how the, what that area looks like, so in case something were to leak, you know, is there a berm around it or something like that? That would prevent it from running off into a catch basin or something like that.
Do we have the gas, uh, don't we have those? Uh, the gas traps?
There are containment tanks that the state also requires, uh, we actually had to do it on the D- new DPW building, so in case anything did leak, would end up inside that.
But is that showing, is that something that you need here?
You probably would, and that would be part of the building permit, as soon as it goes to the fire department, they're gonna probably require it anyway.
Right, no, no. Right, which is, we don't have a com- I don't think we had comments from the fire department. Um. This is in a water pers- number three, so this is in a, uh, area three, right, Water Resource District, area three.
Overlay. Yeah.
Yes.
Um.
We can come up with a, we can try to contain, contain, uh, some, you can build a, have a list of.
Yeah. You can just look at, what other people have come up with, I mean, my family's come up with processes and, yeah. Twelve, three, B, yeah. What are you doing with overlay? I was just looking at, yeah, stuff on the Water Resource Protection District.
A question on, uh, your comment about the corner.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, you had a question, or you had a comment about changes on the corner, that's what you said, what, what changes are taking place? You said, that's, after you talked about the forty-four percent, and then you said changes on the corner.
I think where the storage units are going, I think.
Oh, no, there's, um, roof.
No, he said something like that.
On the corners of the building to go into this drainage facility, so not only is the impervious pavement, but also the roof is definitely going to leak here. And I'm sure if Maggie can find the calculations, it's gonna be under fifteen percent, once you do the calculation, I'm sure it has to be, cause that must have been a requirement at the time, that you get under that fifteen percent.
Okay, because as I, as I look at the corners out on West Street, that's what I was questioning really, but none of that's gonna change where it's currently vegetated?
No, that's also the same.
Those trees? Okay.
Nothing, nothing on the plan that was submitted prior has changed.
I think that was, um. Um, just, um, on special permits too for this, so, uh, a complete list of all chemicals, pesticides, fuels, and other toxic materials, and gra- and amounts great, you have to list that. A description of measures proposed to protect all storage, containers, facilities from vandalism, corrosion, and leakage, um, description of potentially toxic or hazardous wastes to be generated. Plans showing the storage location and where storage is indoors approximately full of any storage facilities for toxic or hazardous materials. I think, I mean, I think these are all easy ones to just have a paragraph on, you know, what you're storing, how it's protected, if, you know, the building's locked, um, you know, so, I'm sure, you know.
Right.
Stuff that, um, you know, we know that, uh, it complies with, uh, section twelve.
I'd request that too.
I, I'm sure they do, yeah, I mean, then, I, you know, I just wanna make sure.
I don't know if I am.
Um. What, you got, is there a question on the, uh, provision they were?
No, I, I was just looking at, uh.
Twelve, twelve, three, H, three, C, and C. Twelve, three, H, three, C, and C. It's a mouthful. Yeah.
Yeah, twelve, I guess it's twelve.
Twelve, three, A.
Three, A, three, F, um, or sorry, B, uh. Storage of liquid hazardous materials and or liquid petroleum products unless allowed by special permit in accordance with section twelve, three, C, six.
Yeah.
I'm just trying, is that covered?
Twelve, three, C.
Okay, so that's covered on, on it, okay.
Cause they're doing A, B, and C.
It looks like there's special permits under.
Well, and then if you go to that, if you actually go to twelve, three, the C six one, um. It, you're allowed to do it, uh, so long as it's above ground level, on improper service, and either in containers or above ground tanks with building or outdoors. So, I mean, I think it's.
We'd like to hear, we'd like to hear how that's.
Right. Right, they're storing it, right, yeah, I mean, anything you store on site, uh, Paul, how do you, uh, how do you stor- so anything, so just walk us through, you know, what, what you will be storing and how it's stored.
In, in those containers?
Yeah.
It might be like hand tools, um, uh, maybe, maybe like a lead blower or something like that.
Yeah.
Very small, um, in the garage, a lot of the stuff itself will be locked up, obviously secured, same with the containers, with, you know, surveillance.
It may have gas in a can or something, so you could put that in, uh, mis- those, those tools.
Yeah. Yeah, like a gallon. Yeah.
Yeah. Little, the little.
Yeah.
Red type of.
Yeah.
But you're not, it's not like a, um, a container where you could, uh, you know, it's not like a big one where, you know, you turn it on and you get the gas out, you, you know, right?
Yeah, no, 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 not a storage, no.
Not like a storage.
We, we get fuel down the street at a, at the gas station for all the.
Right, yeah, a lot of yards have their own fuel tanks at them, so, but you, you won't have that here, okay.
Correct, yeah.
So other than that, I mean, it's really, what else would you, would be in there, that would be.
There's really not much, other than.
Chemical, chemical in each vehicle.
Right, but it, right, but I mean, if you're having de- you know, I mean, storing.
Go fertilize it or whatever.
Yeah, fertilize, yeah, stuff like that, you know, or, or stuff, you know, other.
It just has to come up on the list.
Yeah. And.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Uh, one of the questions that were, was brought up was about how it was created at thirty-eight thousand?
Yes.
So I actually went back to the books nineteen seventy-four, which was the same, and then nineteen seventy-one as well. Um, it basically says here, under section six, uh, number four, lot area in frontage in limit- limited manufacturing districts. Any limited manufacturing district, no building except a one-story building with accessory use shall be constructed on a lot, having an area of less than forty thousand square feet, or having less than two hundred square feet of frontage on at least one street. Number six has other exceptions, which is a lot tracker parcel laid out and recorded prior to the effective date of the, the application. The applicable area in frontage requirements hereon and not on said effective date adjoin other land of same ownership, available to use in connection therewith may be divided into two lots. Where each lot resulting from each division has not less than eighty percent of the required lot area in frontage.
So someone, something.
It was created, they divided it.
Yeah.
They still had at least eighty percent, so, if that helps.
But it actually was created in seventy-three.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yeah, it's also in the nineteen seventy book, it's the same thing.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, this one was just clearer to read.
Right. Yeah.
Um. There's the, uh, provision there on the fifteen percent, twelve, three, A. Three, B, okay, yeah. And so you, uh, Dave, and, and those two special permit requests, it's, it's, am I missing that? So that's just, if you go to twelve, three. Whatever it was, twelve, three, A, three, if it's more than the fifteen percent, you're saying that's a special permit?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
What about a, uh, impervious coverage, uh, or taking the parking areas and asking that the applicant make it so that it's pervious?
Pervious to the material.
Some, something like that, that way it drops, uh, it meets the requirements.
I don't know what that calculation gets it down to, but I mean, it certainly counts.
Well, it, it's gonna, I'm looking at the size of the building, and at, uh, sixty-seven hundred square feet on a thirty-eight hundred, thirty-eight thousand square foot lot. Definitely gonna bring it down close.
If everything else other than the building's pervious, you're saying?
Right.
Yeah. Um.
Well, eh, it, it sounds to me like, you know, Maggie hasn't gotten to a point that she's, has enough information.
No, yeah.
I mean, at least I haven't seen a follow-up memo from her on that, so.
My, me, and she may have additional comments such as, you know, that, or the drainage here works, and I, I'm, I'm good with it, and, uh, you know, I found my file, or they updated whatever they needed to, and maybe, you know. Yeah, I'm okay, the, the impervious, additional impervious here has no negative impact, or, you know, a suggestion that it be more pervious, but, yeah, certainly, you know. Uh, having, you know, I, I don't know where you left it with, with, with Maggie, but certainly have that information.
She said she'll, she'll look for it.
Yeah.
She remembers it, she just didn't have the file.
No, but, right, I mean, I, 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 you know, I don't know from any, you know, engineering, how, you know, not that, you know, if she may require new information, that, you know, things change, eh, you know. Um, I think we're just down to, you know, eh, eh, you know, so we could go through some of the other comments on, um, the other ones, but, you know. I think that the variance ones, you know, having the shape you have, um, and the topography, and I think, um, the toxics, I'm not, you know, I think we've, we heard from Board of Health. But, you know, I think just having that complete, the list and how it's going, like actually for the file, how it's gonna be stored and all that stuff, so it complies with, with section twelve. I think that would be the open-ended, more open-ended one would be the impervious and getting something from the town engineer, either making it more compliant or getting something from the town engineer that, um, this special permit doesn't have, won't have a negative impact. And, you know, the, it works, but, um.
Call it wrong to use that.
Yeah, no, no, you know, that's fine, is there, um, um, any members of the public here to speak on this case tonight? Wow, we're.
Nice.
No, that's no, no, nobody here, okay, so, um, I don't know how the rest of the board feels on wanting that information, but I think it would be those two pieces helpful.
Yeah, I, I guess I would just bring to your attention too, and maybe you've already addressed it, but the, it looks like one of the requirements in this area is that the stormwater runoff be treated in accordance with the Massachusetts stormwater policy. And that.
Yeah, that's what he said.
I know that you, you mentioned, um, uh, I be, believe that you spoke to conservation about that or something, but I guess, i- if you're gonna supply additional information, if you could just explain compliance with that, that would be great.
Yeah, as far as conservation, the only thing I saw on there, uh.
Silk, silk packs.
They required the, uh, silk sacks and the catch basins, cause they're not, not within their jurisdiction.
Right.
Other than the drainage does, on, on the road now, go into these catch basins, like the town of Duck Savage or something, and back when this was done, there was no detention bases, there was no stormwater management, you know, this was just a.
Right.
A direct discharge right into the wetlands, so I think what the reason why they did all this, uh, Rick and, and Johnny answered at the time, was to, you know, try to keep everything on that lot, so it does even go into the upstream range.
Hmm, yep.
Okay, and I, I'm sure once Maggie finds that stuff.
Right, I, I just don't, you know, just want her to tell us that that's good, and she may ask you to say, hey, you know, this is too old for me to rely on, can you go back out and do a ta- uh, you know, and, and there may be nothing, she may be good, I just, till we see that from her.
No, I'll call it.
Um, it's more technical, but any other, eh, just so there's clear direction on any of the other, the three variances or the other special permit, I mean, I don't think there's any more.
Just the rest of the chemicals.
Information we need, I, I don't see an issue, um, you know.
Does anybody want, I think, if we're gonna get back together, the old case.
Oh, yeah, we would, yeah, but, you know, in the same sense, it's a, you know, it is a brand new filing, it's, it's helpful for a reference point, right, to see.
Right, right, but in this new application, if we're gonna rely on any of the arguments or information from the prior case, we'd want that prior case and minutes presented so that, for the benefit of people who weren't necessarily here.
It'll be helpful to see, yeah.
Of course, yeah, of course, yeah.
Yeah, no, right.
But, yeah, right, still looking.
I know you're very disagreeable, you probably disagree.
Yeah, yeah, so I think, uh, no, I, I, I just want a direction so that, you know, they know what.
Right.
You know, if, if they're coming back what they need, so we can finish, so I, I think.
We, we can get the decision.
Yeah, no, we could get, we, we, yeah, we should have the decision, but, so I, I don't, I, I, you know, I won't speak for anyone, so I don't have an issue with any of the variances based on what I've heard and shown on the plan.
Nope.
The decision would help, and, and the toxic or hazardous given what has been presented, but we do need for the files to comply with that, the list, and, and how it's gonna be stored, and that. That was the only thing maybe, but th- that's not, I mean, if you're coming back anyways, might as well just take care of that.
Yeah.
The big one is just clear up the, um, the impervious and, and have, uh, an answer, you know, something, I'm sure we'll have something back from Maggie, but have that issue resolved, and I think it should be pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
It's fair and I'm sure.
Yeah, is that?
Thank you very much.
Sound good? Yeah, right, I don't think we meet again until.
April fourth, it's.
April fourth, although, yeah, we were, uh, I know that we're trying, maybe trying to schedule a meeting two weeks from now, but, I.
Is the applic- is the applicant in a hurry for this?
No. No.
Is, is there a time requirement?
Well.
It's been sitting around for a while, so.
Yeah. What's your timing?
He doesn't wanna die.
He's ready to go.
He doesn't wanna die for us.
Yeah, well, he's, he's ready, he wants to go. Uh, I, I don't see it, yeah, you know, and this, if you come back that night, anything going, you know, this isn't, uh.
So April what?
April fourth, yeah.
Seven.
All right.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to continue case, um, any other, is that a, any other comment or anything else from the board that they need before we send them away, okay? I'll make a motion to continue case two dash eighteen, uh, to April fourth, two thousand eighteen, seven P M. in this room.
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
No, no, um, there was a, that's fine, we're not going to, cause I couldn't do it anyways, but, uh, town council had, um.
See you, Bobby, take care.
Requested some time of ours, that was, may have been time sensitive, but I said, you know, it's not on there, so it wasn't.
So we have to do something with the town council, like, or is it just?
Uh, we'll do, we, we'll do it August, April, April fourth.
We'll do it August, yeah.
We'll talk about it, uh, at the end, real quick.
Yeah, okay. Very good.
I love this, we're moving on, I'm gonna get home, I'm gonna learn.
Let's take an hour recess.
I'll run like hell into the puddle out there.
All right, our next case is case number, it's an application from Norman's.
Ivy.
Ivy, thank you, case number three dash eighteen with respect to the property at sixty-two Highland Street, zoning district RB. It's an application for a variance under section six being one of the zoning bylaws to allow a roof overhang with posts twenty-nine point five feet from the front setback. Welcome.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good.
I brought a picture of the front of the house, it might be.
Oh, good, that would be great, come on up.
We do many a house up this area.
Yes.
How do you not know? I never saw that name before.
David.
Already know what kind of name it is.
So for the, um, for that landing in, at the front of the house, I have a door that's gonna be centered. And then I have two windows, the ones without the grills, those are gonna get moved over and get centered. What I'd like to do, because this is my main entrance to the house, is to put just a small roof to cover my landing. It's a four by eight, uh, piece of granite there, I'm just looking to put a roof above that. Unfortunately, I only have, I need thirty feet and I have twenty-nine foot, six inches. If I bring the roof out to cover the whole piece of granite.
So you're six inches short.
I hate when that happens.
It would he- would help, be helpful too, if my property, my structure was nice and square on my lot as well.
Ooh, that's what we need to know.
It's ridiculous, yeah, it's parallel to the street, but it's not.
We can use that. Do you have a site plan, stamps, plan in here?
Yes.
And it isn't one.
Yes.
The roof would match the, uh, the roof above, same pitch, all the, all the trims and everything else, so aesthetically it would look nice.
Uh, let me ask you a question, Dave. Now, I know, uh, for unenclosed or unroofed.
Yeah, it's really not the roof we're talking about, yeah.
Right? It's forty-eight inches, right? But there's also a provision for eighteen inches of, uh, roof overhang.
Eighteen inches, right. But we're not talking about the roof. The roof can be where it is.
No worries. Oh, you need the post.
The post. It's the post.
It's the post.
Post at twenty-nine point five. If it was on brackets or if posts had moved back, we, we wouldn't even be here.
So how, what, how is this being?
So it will help both.
Why can't the post just move back six inches and you still overhang it?
That's exactly what Dave said.
No, no, explain why you can, no, yeah.
Yeah, sure. The front door itself is gonna be a thirty-six inch door with some sidelines.
Yeah. All right, so it's not this door, you're gonna center it and put a door, a new door, yeah.
Right, yeah, right, right. That door is actually gonna be pushed out to give me six more inches in front of my stairs coming down on the inside.
It's going to be.
Because, because it's a typical cape that it started with.
The stairs are the minute you walk in.
And my, and my stairs are thirty-six right off the door.
Right on the, yeah.
I just wanna get a little bit more wiggle room coming down those stairs.
All right, so, so you bumped that out.
So basically, my landing is gonna get shortened up by six inches.
Correct, all right.
Okay?
Yeah.
So picture that, and now picture two eight-inch square columns, which is the size that was gonna look nice proportion-wise.
Yeah.
Okay? If I take those posts and just push them back six inches, when those rail, when my railings come up to, to meet it and my side railings, it's, it's gonna, it's proportion-wise, it's just not gonna look nice.
So we can use that for the, the shape of the, you know, it's perpendicular to the street.
Right, and you checked the frontages on your neighbor there?
I looked, I didn't measure, but I looked at frontages on both left and right, those houses seem to have been.
They're further back.
A little bit further back.
You did your homework, you, you knew the questions we were gonna ask. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Do we, um, have an idea about when was the house built?
The built, the, the original house was built in nineteen fifty-six.
So, so that front wall was established in nineteen fifty-six?
That, that front wall has never changed. I did make it a colonial a few years back, but the, the, the face of that front has never changed.
Hmm.
The original foundation.
Yeah, these houses were all out of whack.
Yeah.
That's why we do so many of them up there.
I think just, uh, the only reason we're asking these questions is, you know, because variances are, you know, there's a certain threshold to meet them. Here it's as de minimis and minor of a, you know, variance request is we probably see, but we still, it's still a variance request, so, but, you know. I, 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 you know, on its face, I have no problem with it. So if somebody could, uh, craft an argument.
I think we can use that it's not.
In a lot of towns, you could use the average of your setbacks.
Right.
As long as no one point's closer than whatever. I don't think we have a provision like that.
That's a state rule.
Yeah.
That's a state rule that's not a law from average.
So we can use that? We can use that.
No, we can't, well, it's not on our, it's not on our bylaw, but, uh.
State?
Yeah, it also is, it is on our bylaw.
I thought it was.
Using the, the house's size.
No, that is, that is, I'm saying on, a lot of them have the, the perpendicular rule.
Yes.
That if you're, or parallel, sorry, parallel, if your, if your building isn't parallel to a sideline, yes, I, yes.
What's the difference on the other side coming out, do you know?
Uh, I don't have that to, to mention.
Yeah, it's just that one corner.
Yeah.
The way the, can't just pick the whole house up and twist it a little bit.
Like in The Wizard of Oz.
Switch it around a little bit, right? No, this is the, oh, yeah.
I'm gonna go with the way the house.
Uh, real quick, on this, um, town engineer had no comments, planning had no comments, conservation, no comments. Um, Board of Health had no comments, the fire chief had no comments, and believe it or not, the police department had no comments, so. Anybody from the public here to speak on this?
I would like it.
She wants a purty front door.
Any, any thoughts up here?
I, I mean, we often talk about variances owing to the shape or topography of the lot, not the building.
Right, yes.
Right.
So I did just double-check the bylaws and it, it does say.
Structure, yeah.
Structure.
Right, or structure.
Yes.
You know, and here, this is not a structure that was built relatively recently or certainly within the timeframe of, you know, the.
Right before the zoning.
The zoning, so, you know, where that front of the building is placed, um, you know, I think is rather unique to this particular parcel, relative to the neighborhood, I mean, in two fronts, the angle as well as the close proximity to the front setback. Whereas all of the other properties, the houses are set further back. Also, um, you know, what, the, the relief that's being requested, I, I, I think is.
It's the minimal amount to accomplish.
Minimal.
Oh, no, it's the, it's the minimal amount to accomplish.
Yeah, minimal.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and the, the derogating from the intent of the bylaw, which is to establish property, I mean, build structures that are right up on the street. Um, you know, I, I mean, I don't know if the applicant would be amenable to this, but I wanna include a condition that there be no further construction in the front of the house. You know, in other words, we wouldn't want to step our way into, uh, encroaching further and further close to the street. I mean, we're talking here about.
Just this.
Just this, right.
Yeah, yeah, the building can't be pushed out, I, I, I don't think that's, yeah, yeah, no, yeah.
I understand it's obvious, but, you know, I, I mean, what's important here is, is that we're, we're looking at this and not derogating from the intent. The intent of the bylaw is not to encroach upon the street, um, which I don't believe is your intent here, um, and I think a condition just highlighting that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, it's fine, yeah. I know, like you are, I was gonna, I wanna keep your, your argument on the rest of the.
Keep going, Craig, you're nailing it. You're nailing it.
Which other part?
I was just gonna, just keep going, no one stopped you.
That's my thought.
He was nailing it.
Mr. Chairman, was the previous relief on this, I see the, uh, side yard setback of twelve feet for the garage, was that something that was previously granted?
I didn't, I don't.
That, that was, when I did the garage, I had to come before here to put that garage on to the left.
What year?
Two thousand and four.
Ooh.
Sue, come on. Why don't I remember? We do houses up here all the time, so I was just saying to him, you know, Thomas Street, all these, Benny, all these houses are, all up before us all the time.
I think that was a, a special permit versus a variance for something.
Yeah, yeah, side yard would be.
So.
Okay. Side yard encroachment is a special permit now, I guess. Do you don't remember?
No, this house, no, I don't.
For my time.
All right, all right, you gotta pass.
Was it before you? No, I don't remember.
Um, yeah, again, that's a, it's a.
I have no problem, I think we can use, just what Craig said, I think is fine.
I think we nailed it, right, I think so. We're talking six inches, yeah.
Johnny, have any other comments on that?
No, I, I just realized that relief has already been granted once and I, Craig, I think hit it perfectly as far as making it tight so somebody else doesn't come in asking for something grandiose.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I imagine there's nothing in that decision that's, you know, would prohibit, you know, this. All right, I mean, a side yard decision on a front, so.
Well, I mean, I think we've had other cases where a variance was granted and then, you know, and there was a condition imposed associated with the variance, right? And at some point, the variance was abandoned.
Yes.
And they, they sought to abandon the condition after they've enjoyed the variance, do we remember that case?
No, no, we don't.
Well, if you look at this, it's not really any other place to put it. The garage.
Yeah.
I mean.
Oh.
Oh, we're not talking about.
No, we're not talking about the garage, we're talking about the condition of.
I just asked that, I just asked that because I see that relief has been granted at some point and now we're giving additional relief.
Yeah, so we, so, I think the point is, at some point, we found there was something on this that, that warranted, you know, whether it was, it, I can't imagine why it was a special permit for a side yard, but maybe it was just a special permit, but, you know, there was some, some finding was made on this structure and lot that allowed a decision.
But this ties into what Craig just said, would, did, in the decision, it would say no further relief in the, in the, in the front, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
To be granted, yeah.
That's fine.
There's nothing else to do, this is it.
Well.
I'm good with it.
All right, okay.
Do, do we want to say anything about enclosing the front area? Cause it's just a post.
Would you say?
You enclosed that area, yeah, no, I mean, it's, it's.
Not enclosing it, yeah.
We can just condition it.
Yeah, I'd put that in the decision, yeah.
Not closed. Yeah, yeah, that would, yeah, let's put it right in.
You, you don't want them to enclose us.
Nope.
Yeah, we'll just put it right in.
I mean, let's say it's how, unsh- if, if we're gonna, a show on this plan, right?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, not, not to be enclosed in the future.
You know that cape on Washington Street, that beautiful cape across from Royal Crest that has the white fence and the nice portico at the eye?
Malvey's House, yeah.
That's exactly what I want, and that's what he's gonna give me as long as you guys bring it.
Geez, that's just sold a few years ago.
I know.
You missed the boat.
I, I, I think that, I think that was, I think that's the, as that, that's the reasoning and the, the finding and a condition at all at once.
I think that's another condition.
Too much traffic.
I want.
Too much traffic, you're fine where you are.
Yeah, all right.
Oh, no, I'm just saying, I love that portico.
Yeah, it is a pretty, yeah.
All right.
Just enough so you don't get wet.
All right, anything else from the board we need? Everyone good?
I think I'm good.
Good.
I'm good.
All right.
I'm good.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on case number three dash eighteen.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we have a draft decision. Thank you for the picture.
We have to have Craig, Craig, you just recite that all off.
Yeah, he's gonna, you're gonna have to type that in right now.
Good, you're up.
You know, I wanna hear you, keep going on that, through the rest of the, uh, the section.
It's gonna go on straight down.
I can't remember what I said.
No more construction at sixty-two Highland Street.
There you go, yeah.
All right.
Says, says the applicant.
Roof overhang shall be located, constructor showing on the plan, submit at the public hearing, just put the date on it, right?
March seventh, two thousand and eight.
Yeah.
How's the data?
Yeah, number two would just say the, yeah, we should, the, the front porch shall not be enclosed.
Any other conditions we can think of?
Conditions, just a show on plan, right? And no further relief.
Right.
Well, I referenced both plans, right, the site plan and I referenced the architectural plan as well, right? We have a date on that one.
Yeah.
That was, there was no, eleven, eleven, one, seventeen.
What that is?
That's the first condition, I think, the second condition is.
Further encroachment in the front, yeah.
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 And then the third is it won't be enclosed.
Yeah.
Right.
So we got the three conditions.
Sorry, so the first one is the site, is the plan, not enclosed.
Both the plans, won't be, no further, and then, and it won't be enclosed, okay. All right, reasons for the decision, number one. Craig?
Owing to the circumstances.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Of the parcel or structure, the structure was built in approximately nineteen fifty-six.
Six, yeah.
Um, in a cur- in its current location.
It's not, uh.
At an angle.
To the sp- yeah, to the street.
And it is closer to the front yard setback than other properties in the area.
Sorry, can I ask a question about that?
And so the. Sure.
So it's closer to the street, is what you're saying.
We have to have the word line.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, the, 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 the structure is not parallel to the street?
Right, no, I get that.
Right, and that, and it's.
For the, it's closer to the front yard, which I didn't.
Closer. Right, it's closer to the street, so it's, uh, yeah.
Closer to the street than the adjacent lots, right, okay.
Correct.
Yeah.
I think we said it was constructed at an angle.
Yes.
Yep.
It's not parallel to the street, yeah.
I, I mean, when I was saying closer to the street, it's not only closer to the street, it's very close to the front yard setback requirement.
Yes.
Also.
Right, right, very smart.
So it's not just a matter of it's closer than the other streets, it's actually quite close to, if I recall. The, the, the building itself is right up onto the setback. Nearly.
Yeah.
Five, three one, size of thirty-two, I think.
Thirty-two, seven.
Yeah.
Right, where thirty, thirty is required.
Where's other, or. Other houses in the neighborhood, or the, other, you know, direct, uh, of others have more.
Right.
A greater distance from the, the street watt line to the front, yeah.
Right, I didn't say it earlier. So that is the, um, unique shape and, you know, were we to prevent from, uh, doing construction to the front of the house, or if we required them to, um, locate the construction of the house, um, within the setback, um, they would have to effectively move or completely alter the house, which would be a financial detriment.
Substantial, substantial.
Well, without, they couldn't comply, I would tell you that. The post has to be, the stair, you're, you need a staircase, you need a post at the top of the staircase, you know.
Yeah, there's that too.
Yeah. And so if that post wasn't where it was, you couldn't get a railing that would comply.
Right, I mean, I think the other thing is, and it was discussed in the public hearing about in terms of access into the building, um, during inclement weather. I mean, what they're asking for is to put something that aids to the safety and security of the building. They're not asking to put on just another bedroom, they're asking to secure their front door.
That's a good one to put in, that is good.
Right?
Yeah.
So, so to prevent it, that's a hardship, right? They, they, you know, it's harder to use their property, et cetera. Or they'd have to restructure the house, which would be a financial hardship. Public good, I, I think it creates a.
It's gonna look much better from the outside.
And, and we had no, we had no, but, yeah, we had no, but, we had no opposition.
Current, the, the current architecture is a very tall, flat structure and, you know, adding these additional architectural features will improve the aesthetics of the, of the building, the current building.
Aesthetics.
Contribute to the character of the neighborhood.
And then the, um, third area granted relief without, um, derogating from the intent of the purpose of the bylaw. Purpose of the bylaw is, uh, not to encroach on the front yard setback.
I think the one you said, you know, secure sa- you know, the, the safety one, the more purposes, to secure safety from, you know, other dangers. This allows us, it allows the use of the property in a safer manner, don't doubt it.
But also, I mean, Craig, uh, uh, the setback provides for an open space visibility, um, you know, without buildings encroaching onto the street. Um, adding this post in an open manner, open construction, this is why I was thinking no enclosing. It doesn't limit the visual openness of this area because it's an open construction. It doesn't limit the visual openness of this area because it's an open construction. And with the conditions imposed that there won't be further construction towards the front yard setback, um, there won't be further derogation from the bylaw.
Yeah.
Building post too.
Well, that's, yeah, that was the point I was trying to make, it's that, it's, we're, we're talking about the post here, we're not talking about that the building is gonna be bumped out into it.
Or even the roof overhang more than the total.
Right, so, you know, from an aesthetic point of view, respectively, no one may even notice that the post is in the setback.
Except for Dave.
Except for Dave.
Yeah. Alright.
We good?
I think we're good. Any others things to add? Alright.
No, what you said.
Alright.
Yeah, one more.
Alright. Since you were so eloquent in drafting that variance argument.
So, I will make a motion on behalf of the applicant to grant a variance under six V one to allow a roof overhang with a post twenty-nine point five feet from the front setback where thirty feet is required with the conditions imposed.
And, and we'll get, they're all on tape, so I'm sure she'll have a chance to review them too, so.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Alright.
Second.
Alright, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you guys.
You better hurry up and build that before. You know, we should put a time limit, right? We shouldn't have put a condition?
It's been eighteen years.
She's a noob.
Alright. There one more. Alright, since it's getting wicked snowy as I was told.
My daughter just texted in.
Not just snowy, it's wicked snowy.
Wicked.
Wicked snowy.
But she wrote, the snow is hot, it's huge flakes, hard to drive.
Yes. What is it?
Hard to drive.
Alright. Our next case is an application from Deborah and Lee.
Leon.
Leon? Right?
From Bay.
Lam, from Bay.
Lam from Bay.
La from Bois.
La, La from Bois. Case number four dash eighteen with respect to the property sixty-one High Street, zoning district RB. Application for a special permit under section five V two of the zoning bylaw to allow an accessory in-law suite in space previously approved as a childcare center with no alterations needed. Welcome.
Hello.
This is interesting. Yes.
Um, yeah, the, we bought the home in Au- August.
Yep, welcome.
Um, here, thank you, um, glad to be your wall pole, um, so, the place has been, the building was built in nineteen sixty-seven, it's had a lot of, maybe two, um, building permits in the past to, for extra, um, space, but that was back in the eighties and all approved. The childcare has been there since, um, the permitted approval since, um, early eighties, um, and has been in place. I actually bought the, the home and it was advertised with an in-law suite, but it's not officially permitted as one, so that's what I'm doing. Um, the first purpose for getting this permitted as in-law is really for financial, um, it's to the bank, I'm trying to refinance and the bank, um, we need to get it at a certain level and the in-law suite has to be permitted to be approved at a certain level, um, for financial purposes, just the valuation of the property. And then second, um, would be, um, just for a stepdaughter and step-grandchildren, um, in the future that might stay there. But other than that, it's mainly for financial purposes of valuing the home and for resale.
Yep.
Hmm.
Yeah, so, yeah, the in-law suite's a new, uh, newer provision from our, from, Dave helped craft and we've had a number of cases that probably, so, uh, it's an interesting one, that was a daycare before, huh? Yeah, a kindergarten I see on the plan.
Yeah.
Margaret.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's had.
Did you go there?
No.
A lot of people, a lot of people recognize it and say, my kids went there, my kids went there, a lot of people do.
Oh, millions of people, yeah, it's, was there forever.
Yeah.
Then she moved up here on Kendall. I think her kids stayed there, somebody stayed there.
Yeah.
So the, uh, the pink on here is what you're just saying is the, would be considered the in-law portion of that.
Right, and so in response to Margaret's, um, questions.
Yes.
She had only had the first, this is just the bottom level of the home, um, so her first question was about the square footage that I answered, basically, I gave her the second, the first level of the home, and I also attached the recent appraisal of the bank that's trying to refinance the home. Um, the total square footage is thirty-five hundred, thirty-five, um, thirty, and so the total square footage of this space is nine hundred and sixteen, that's twenty-six percent, so it falls underneath the, the thirty-three percent that's required.
Yep.
Um, there are only, um, also, she mentioned, Margaret mentioned something about seeing it's more than two exterior landings. Um, she was not understanding that tho, those were just steps into the other part of the home inside, so there's only two exterior landings on it, the ones that say exit are exterior. The other ones that show stairs are just into, the kindergarten is now a bedroom and just a hallway, um, into the basement part of the house. There's no, the only alterations we're doing are paint and, and flooring.
We're gonna let Sue, we're gonna let Sue leave, we do have, since we have John here, she's gotta drive somewhere, so we gotta get her.
Once I hear that plow.
Safely.
That's fine.
I, I commend you, cause often we get, uh, letters from the town engineer and even applicants' engineers respond, and there's still comments from the town engineer. But just so we know, there was four comments from the town engineer about the size of the in-law and the percentage, the exterior landings, the parking and the, um, uh, her comments was, uh, no information is parking and board should discuss the structures on the lot that are not entirely within the subject pool shared basketball court. Uh, what, uh, we then got a subsequent letter from the town engineer that all comments made in the previous letter have been resolved, so you did good.
Well done.
Yes. So we do have a letter from the town engineer, there was no, uh, everything's been resolved, police department had no, uh, concerns related to traffic, um, planning had no comment con, conservation, no comment border health, had no concerns. Fire department plans to include the main house and in-law with smoke and carbon monoxide alarm locations needs to be submitted to the wall pole fire for review.
That's actually been done by them, there is.
Follow-up fire department inspection to check device performance and locations will be required as well.
Yep.
Nothing that, I mean, you know, I, um, nothing that we couldn't.
We actually had to.
We would just condition that it would be complied with on something like that.
Right. We had to actually do that before we bought the home, um, so.
Uh, yeah, no, I, I, I'm not, I, I just, you know, I, I don't know, it's.
All very new.
You're complied with and, you know, you, you had a comment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, a couple things I wanna make sure of, obviously, it was a daycare before, things, uh, may have to be changed. I have not physically been in the building, but we would wanna go in there as, obviously, make sure it meets all building code for what it's now being, uh, used for. It should, it, I don't expect any problems, but I also wanna make sure that the fire alarms are fully addressed, cause the system that was in there was removed, correct?
Yes, and it was on an electric.
Cause it had a full service to, yeah, right.
We had already had an electrical permit, um, in place where they removed all that, took out the alarms, the electrical permit has been closed.
Right. Yep. Right.
There was a building permit for some windows, which were for the entire home, including part of the space, and that has been closed, I believe.
Right, and again, it only went from.
When did it switch from a daycare to a house?
Just, oh, just this year.
Oh, it did?
Yeah, in, in the past year.
Oh, I don't think it's been used as a daycare.
Yeah, it hasn't been used in years, it was almost abandoned.
Right, no, no, right, no, no, I'm saying, how long, at, at the daycare, to make it a house, it's a different floor plan than a daycare.
Well, not, not exactly, they're using it as the same floor plan.
It's the same floor, so it was the same floor plan, alright.
Right, they're not actually physically changing anything.
Yeah.
It's more the life safety issues that I wanna make sure now that it's a home and it's gonna be used in accessory apartment, cause there's certain things under the building code that are slightly different from a daycare to a dwelling. And obviously, we wanna make sure all of those covered, because when she bought the building, she had the fire alarms, um, retrofitted to what it should be today, okay? And those were all signed off, but we haven't a chance to go through to make sure everything else is good, so.
So the plan that says existing never permitted, that plan, that's what's there now?
Yes.
So I'm saying, maybe I'm missing.
Yeah, I saw that too, existing never permitted.
Yeah.
And then this is what is daycare, so it's just literally, um.
So, no, the pink is what is shown on this plan that says existing never permitted.
They say never newer.
Never, yeah, and the rest of it is where, is the house part.
Yeah.
But it doesn't look like, there's no, where's the kid, you know, I, I, not that it matters, I just didn't know what work had to be done.
It's being called something different now, that's, it didn't need to be, technically, you removed those fire alarms, you can now call it as rest, the rest of the house. Technically, the kitchen, et cetera, can't just, you can't have what looks like a separate dwelling unit without the special permit that she's now asking for.
Right, but, and the, nothing's cha, the outside is not changing.
Nope.
You're just taking this space that, and, but it's not, wasn't lawful either, so it doesn't, it's not that other pre-existing, so it's just, alright.
So it says never permitted. The words never permitted, never special permitted, that's what it really should say, because even though everything there had building permits, everything legally is building permits, but it was used as a daycare. Now that it's using, being used as a in-law, it needs a special permit, and that's why she's here.
So, so there was, sorry, so there was a kitchen with the daycare?
Yes.
Oh, okay, that's what I'm.
Yeah, that's just, I didn't see it.
That's what I could have looked at.
Yes.
Yep. And it's, it's a split level ranch, the upstairs has always been residential.
Yes, the downstairs part is residential as well, um, as you walk down through this hallway from the downstairs, and you actually can walk into this section of the, um, in-law. This is the front entrance, a separate entrance, this is living room, open space, kitchens on this side of, and there's a, um, looking, and this is the bedroom. They were using it as, you know, a kindergarten space, they were sleeping down there, and there's a kitchen there, and there's a, you know, they had it labeled as kindergarten school. Um, it's, it's an open space, it would be a dining room, living room, the kitchen's in place. The previous owners for years, after the daycare, were actually renting it illegally, I believe, um, but I need to make it legal for my bank to say yes to me.
Okay. Alright, so, so all in all, it's, there's no other, you're not doing any work, it's just you're taking this and trying to make that in-law a legal in-law.
Right.
That's all we're talking about here, so, alright, so it still looks like it will look and all that good stuff, right?
Yeah, the outside picture that's on the tact, um, plan and part of that, um, is the same.
Yep. And you know the require, you know, the, um, uh, one, uh, no more than one water meter, though we should know, it, it's, it's gotta be someone related, and, you know, for, that's just a condition we would impose on, on these, like we do all of them.
Yes, um, electrician, um, and has, it's all one meter.
Yeah, okay.
One electric meter, one water meter.
One electric meter, um, he knew the rules and he, you know, when we were going through it, um, it was one, we, that was part of the electrical permit, it was one, it was a meter that was replaced, but it was, um, only one. And one heating unit as well.
As far as access into the building, um, is it a common access, or does it have its, I saw that there's two egresses for this in-law apartment?
Yes, if, you know, my stepdaughter decided to rent with her grandchildren, she could walk in a separate entrance and not have to go through the house to get to it. There's two of them, there's one in the back with a deck and there's one on the front with a deck, it's actually hidden in the picture behind bushes, you can't really tell that there's anything there, just looks like a part of the home.
Yeah. This certainly does.
And how about, how it connects into the home so that it is truly an in-law apartment as far as being part of the existing structure?
It connects through a laundry room, um, basically, so it would be a shared laundry. Um, this is the best picture, um, seen, I think it's in your package, this is what's considered, um, correct, so, um, the downstairs part of the home, this is unfinished basement, this is the bedrooms, office. This is a laundry room, um, right now, and you would just walk through this hallway and up a few, three sets of stairs and you're there. So I think if people were being dropped off, it, there's a large parking, that's why I'm not asking for any parking, because it was a daycare, this, this parking on the side of the home, it's, it's got a lot of parking.
Where the gravel drive is, or?
Yeah, it's a gravel drive.
Yeah. Yep.
And there's a pathway to this entrance, so I think they were entering through this back way, there's a, a cement walkway to this back entrance, that.
Uh, Dave, just so, I'm, I'm curious in the future on these, when you, the, the, complying with the parking requirement again, how is that? I, I know it does here, but just, just real quick, cause I don't wanna keep anyone longer than we need to.
Yeah, I mean, well, with any unit is one per bedroom, technically, commercial, it's one per bedroom, but we've, unless it's two per dwelling unit. So technically, dwelling unit in our bylaw dwelling unit means a two-family each unit, so it'll be four. As far as an accessory goes, it's actually up to the board whether they wanna require more than three.
Okay, alright, yeah.
So technically, you're adding one more, so it would be more than three.
Yep.
And, and that's really up to the board's discretion.
And that would be on a building, if I was to be.
The parking?
The parking.
No.
No?
As long as you can show it to us as part of this whole.
Um, clearly, it looks like there's a, a ton of parking here, so I'm not, I just was just asking real quick.
We're getting more and more.
I mean, it looks like a full court basketball hoop, so I think if anyone wants a game. It was a good time. Um, any other, Dave, do you have any other comments, since, I mean, this is pretty, seems like a pretty straightforward in-law, since we're not doing any changes to the structure. Yeah. It probably, it probably could apply to the pre-existing unit, cause there must have been a building permit at some point to do all this work.
Yeah, there was, it was building permits for the daycare.
Yeah.
But, I mean, obviously, it's, it almost fell into this, the new bylaw.
Alright.
The minute she took it over.
Right.
Okay. Anything? Your, your, your vote and so.
Yeah, no, I, I think it meets, uh, it meets the requirements for an in-law apartment, and that's really what I was looking at, is it's not just an apartment.
Yeah.
It has to be connected into the house, we talked about the egresses.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, the utilities, yeah, so it's, it's a, uh.
Yeah, I think the big one here on ours are.
You mentioned the condition would be it has to be a, uh, a family.
Yeah, it has to be, uh, within the third degree of kinship is how they worded it, so, I think that's, that's our protection on these.
Right.
You know, that, you know, cause it, essentially, you know, you can put a lock on a door and call it a unit, right, and rent it out to anyone, I think.
Right.
Our protection is it's a, it's recorded there, it's gotta be, and if somehow you're, and you gotta report it, file something with, with you guys. So I think at some point, you know, someone may try to circumvent that, but, you know.
No, I always say.
That's like any other case we have.
It's not the applicant before, it's, it's somebody in the future.
It's an enforcement thing. It's in the future, yeah.
Who, right.
Yeah, and it becomes an enforcement thing, which I'm sure you know is kind of a pain, but.
Right. Always is. And we don't wanna be, we don't want you doing that, that's not, you don't wanna be doing that.
He drafted the bylaw, so it's his, it's his own fault if he's dealing with it. Alright. Anyone from the audit public here tonight? Nobody, I have any, four for four. Alright. Jay, you haven't made any, you good?
No, no, I'm good, no, I'm good.
Alright.
I'm good with it.
I've got another one. Some motions here?
Yeah, sure, I make a motion to approve case number zero, uh, zero one eighteen, oh, sorry.
Four. Close. Close it, close.
Oh, sorry. Make a motion to close case zero four eighteen sixty-one High Street.
Second.
Alright, in favor?
Aye.
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 Good. Alright, we got a, uh, draft decision, I think somewhere, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Bylaws.
Yeah, I think it's, I think, uh, Amy's got, um, she probably took the dra, like, we've done a bunch of these now, so.
Right. I, I actually suggested to her that for each case that we hear repeatedly, in-law.[1739.14]
I actually suggested to her that for each case that we hear repeatedly, in-law.
Yeah.
Pre-existing non-conforming, that she takes some decisions we've done before and model it into a standard decision.
Yeah. Uh, you know, I think we, we, um, we would wanna just note here that the, um, um, why she has eleven as a condition, the life safety devices.
Mm-hmm.
I think we'd wanna just mirror the language in the, where's from the fire department. From the fire department that just said, uh, their comment was, plans to include main house and in-law with smoke and carbon monoxide alarm locations need to be submitted for Walpole Fire for review. I would just say the plans with smoke and COs need to be submitted for review and approval by Walpole Fire. And follow-up fire department inspection to check devices performing and locations will be required. Fire, uh, fire department inspection was, uh, it, it part of your bill, you know, your, Dave's gonna, probably, it could be stuff that you already did, so it's not.
Yeah, the certificate's already been issued by the fire department, because they came in and inspected before we bought the home, because we had to actually pay to have it done.
And they probably just need to know that, I think what Dave said is now that it's a in-law use.
Right.
Um, you, they.
The certi, the certificate should describe as one for incel.
No, I know, right, yeah, no, I, yeah. I think it's that, now that it's specifically an allowed in-law use.
Okay.
They'll just wanna go in and it probably shouldn't be, but I think that, you know, by, they have to go and make sure that, it's standard in any of these ones we've done is that, that's been required, is that smoke and CO detectors. Okay, you got that one. Yes, alright. And we, and then I think somewhere too, if she noted it, there's no change to the exterior. Is it, no. No, 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 I just, I think in, somewhere, just 'cause it's, you know, I think we have it that it's gotta keep the appearance of a single family. Usually, we see these where there's actually changes going on. I think we just know, I think we've done one where it wasn't, we noted it somewhere, that there's no exterior change.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can sort of add that as a condition.
No, I don't even think you need, I mean, it's, it's, I don't even think it's a condition.
Not adverse to the neighborhood.
No, we usually include it, I mean, well, in some cases, we condition it.
Yeah.
If there's some question whether, based on the material presented, whether it was or was not going to change.
'Cause there was no plan, we're not, I mean, most of these we've seen has been a plan, we're citing the plan and saying, you know, it's gotta conform to the plan. We have no plan, so.
Under G of the finding, now, shall not adversely affect the character of the immediate neighborhood, so we can say that there is no planned alteration of the existing structure, and the existing structure appears to be a single unit, single-family home.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine. I mean, it, that's only for, it's only relevant when there is a change, so it's, you know, there's no change to the appearance, so it's not really relevant either, but.
Probably reduction.
I feel it's an improvement, the fact that you're gonna have home as opposed to a child care.
Well, the use, yeah.
Yeah, the use, you know, so.
And the intensity of the use.
Yeah, no, I think all those.
That's a good point, yeah.
It's more compliance.
Exactly.
With the bylaw, which is, you know, one of the purposes is to bring non-conforming for other situations.
So did we have any other conditions we wanted to impose?
No, I don't.
Um, ma- maybe add constructed per the material presented at public hearing.
Yeah. The only one is that, that plan that says.
I mean, this has like kindergarten and everything on it.
The one that says, there's that one plan that says, uh, existing never permitted.
That was actually drawn by the fire department, I believe, and that's where, all the white out was my notes of where the, where they were gonna be making the changes, where we had to make the changes, is when they went through the first time. So these came from their drawings of the homes, or the previous owner provided them to the fire department.
Yeah, I mean, I think the big one here is as long as it's, it's rented to somebody, I mean, if, as long as it's, it's.
As long as it's a family, yeah.
It's a family member, that it's an existing.
So the findings?
Footprints not changing or anything like that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, for the exterior.
The compliance, the mental, if it complies.
Criteria, standards, therefore. Usually what we say in terms of the A, the, the criterias and standards, is we refer to the other conditions below, because if we meet B through H, then therefore we meet A. So we start with saying that, you know, the applicant has met all of the subsequent conditions, therefore comply with such criterias and standards set forth. That's, usually we start off with that. And then we go into each of these subsequent ones, how it's met. So vehicular and pedestrian traffic, I would say would actually, would reduce the.
Speed.
Yeah.
As, as the cause of the previous.
Vehicular traffic, because we're now gonna be using it for an in-law, as opposed to having multiple vehicle trips with a daycare.
Yep.
Similarly, number of residents.
C is the same thing, yeah.
Employees and customers, it will certainly have less.
Dimensional requirements.
Um, no alteration.
Yep, no alteration, yeah.
To the building. Can highlight there again.
Standard language, I mean.
Yeah, so fire, explosion, and E, and then noise and dust is usually, it's for residential use, and so therefore will not have quantities or items that greater than household use that would cause fire. The risk of fire. Adverse character of the neighborhood.
Improves in the neighborhood.
I think we've discussed.
Trafficalize in other ways.
Yeah.
Residential neighborhood, there's no change to the exterior, the appearance of it being a residential home.
And then, um, provided here in the last for H, purpose of the bylaw, board finds the purpose of the bylaws in hard states to encourage housing, uh, I don't know about low-income housing.
But encourage the most appropriate use of land.
Right.
For, you know, for residential use.
Home, you know.
I think the next one we have to change, though. The proposed in-law suite exists also allow the owners to remain in the home, which is consistent with the purpose. I think here we wanna say it will allow, and because if it's been used, like a use that's been previously, I don't know what the wording is, to allow, um.
Make it more compliant with, or.
To, to.
Change to a residential use.
Right, but I think that space is always, it, I think it's been like that, so.
I, I think what we're saying here is to, to use the home to support the extended family.
Yeah.
Right.
And how it's been restored, I mean, 'cause it's been like that for.
Yeah, you, this, allow the, allow the owners to remain in the home came from where we had an elderly applicant.
Yes.
Who wanted a in-law suite so that they could provide the main part of the house to the next younger generation.
Yeah.
In this case, we're, we're dealing with the opposite.
A lot of these are that, though, they want the parents, you know, a lot of it here, but here it's already a space, we're just trying to make it legal, in lack of better words, but, uh, I think we just wanna change that sentence to what you said was, on the, on the, allow extended family and to make the space compliant with the current bylaw. I mean, that's what.
Yeah, make the space, you know, to a residential use.
Yeah.
One thing on the plan that shows the proposed deck, we're not hearing any part of that.
That, I, the plan was taken from a recent deck permit, so we just, because the plan had just been recently done for this deck permit, which.
Supposed deck.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah.
But that's all set, that's a separate issue?
That's a separate issue.
Didn't require zoning, okay.
Yep, yep, alright. Alright, Bob, we'll let, we'll let John, uh, John make a little bit of that.
And I make a motion to approve plan for sixty-one High Street, case number zero-four-eighteen, with the conditions outlined in the draft decision and the addition of two more, which you identified.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Propose.
Alright. Good luck.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good luck.
He's driving home.
Yes. Alright, I'm gonna be quick, we'll, we'll make a motion to close, adjourn the March seventh, two thousand eighteen. Oh, sorry.
Can I just quickly?
Yes.
Something away, I know it's no one else, I know everybody wants to get home. Something came up today, so I just kinda wanna put this to it. It has to do with accessory apartments, and obviously, or in law suites. Now we're delving into this.
I mean, we, we didn't expect, I mean, he's, certainly, it's only matters we.
Sorry.
We know, we're letting, hear things.
May I continue, I don't.
I'm just concerned about, you know.
What's that?
Open meeting.
It's, it's, we're, you know.
He just wants to run something by us, I, I mean.
I, I mean, it's not, I mean, that's for matters we know of. It's not a matter we knew that was gonna come, he's not, yeah, I think we've.
It's just not posted.
He's just, he just wants to run something.
This is a. Evidence, eh?
What? And there's exceptions to that.
It's a point of clarification, actually.
If there's exceptions to, not, you could talk about, these are unposted, if they come up at a certain timeframe and they're not specific to a certain case or story, but we could certainly check on that, like, uh, real quick.
No.
Hold on, we'll call her.
No, I just wanna make sure whatever we discussed, we can stand up on, right?
Okay. Well, I'll make it as a point of clarification, so it's definitely, it, it has to do with the in-law suite moving forward. There's certain pieces here, five of them exactly, those conditions that have an asterisk with them. And under those five that have the asterisk, it's up to the board to allow greater relief, less, et cetera, condition it all different ways. My question to the board is basically this. There are certain things that come my way, as one did today, that clearly are bound way to an extreme. And is it the wishes of the board for me to send those to them anyway? And what I'm gonna describe is, one of the things I got today was.
We don't, I don't wanna get into the.
Right, I don't need to get to the detail, exactly, but basically.
I hear you, so, yeah, and we know, I mean, there, you know, is there?
'Cause there, there's the asterisks on these, is there a limit to what we would?
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm gonna leave it in your discretion, of that.
Yeah, basically, for a example, fifteen thousand square feet is required if it was three thousand square feet on the lot. You know, would you still wanna hear it?
We've had similar discussions about the adequacy, and with town council, of an adequacy of an application. So if an application came before the office to the secretary, and it was very deficient of information, do we accept it? Or, or do we say to them, no, we, you can't have, you know, we can't submit this because, you know, there's substantial information missing? And I think what we've advised before is we advise, and we say to the applicant, you know, out of practicality, we are free to work with them and say, look, you're wasting your time, this is very unusual compared to other things, you know, and you can use as strong language to not waste their time, not waste our time, the whole bit, as is reasonable, but ultimately, as the applicant, if they want to submit an application, I think we have to accept it and we have to hear it.
And that's the way I've been doing it, I just wanted to make sure that, as far as this goes, 'cause it's a little bit different, still new, that, you know, 'cause.
Yeah, no, I mean, you know, you're the zoning, it's different, you're the zoning enforcement officer, but, you know, well, you know, I think, but.
Right.
You could certainly.
I mean, if they insist on.
Speak your mind, but if they wanna come, that they have every right, is, you know.
Right.
As a, a landowner or applicant in the town to come before the board.
As we all know, some things get a little unusual.
We, um, we won't be surprised.
Okay.
How's that?
Thank you.
Thank you, good, drive safe. Matt, make a money. Motion to close the public hearing from March seventh, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.